Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Councilor Davila. This is the subcommittee meeting of the Audit Committee. Today is September 15, 5:01, calling the meeting into order. We are joined today by Councilor Whitfield, and we also have the president, the audience, Council President Justin Hurst. Good afternoon, everybody. We are today, we are talking, we are calling the meeting to order. On the agenda, we have presentation of the Office of Internal Audit Fiscal Year 2020 Audit Plan. And we have a presentation on discussion of the results of this fiscal year 2019 financial statement by audit by Powers &amp; Sullivan's. Well, maybe we can start with Auditor Young. Auditor, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Davila. Thank you, councilors, for the opportunity to present our fiscal year 21 Audit Plan. So our Audit Plan is basically our agenda of projects that we are scheduled to work on. And I would like to share a screen. If I can do this in Zoom. Could you, do you guys see the screen?
Yep.
You see it.
So we'll turn to page, I'll start with page two of our Audit Plan. And basically lays out our audit resources. So there are three employees in our department. Cecilia Goulet is the manager and David Archie is the staff auditor. And we have approximately fifty, 5,300 hours in total. And as you can see from this pie chart, most of our audit resources is spent on audit and audit-related activities. We spend 20% of our time on maintaining the fraud hotline and performing fraud investigations. And 30% of our time on admin training and other. And our Audit Plan is based upon a risk assessment model. So what that does is we focus on those programs and departments that have the most adverse impact to the city. So, you know, we base it upon a risk assessment, but at the same time, we limit our scope of work to what we think we could realistically accomplish during the fiscal year. So with that said, I'll jump to page four of our Audit Plan. And we'll start off with the required or ongoing projects. We start off with the school department. We have activities, funds, agreed-upon procedures. So at the school department, they have student activity funds that are managed by students. And these funds belong to the students and not to the school department. So Mass General Laws has an annual audit or review requirement. These funds be looked at by external auditors or internally. So we have the service plan with our external auditors in which the Office of Internal Audit reviews the student funds for two years. And the third year, the external auditors does their review. Fiscal year 21 is the third year, so that review will be done by Powers &amp; Sullivan. So we'll work with them to ensure that review gets done and will convey the issues that we've noted from the previous year. Just, just to note, the student activity funds protocols are sound at the school department ever since they implemented the MUNIS reporting function or the accounting function. So it's vastly improved over the past three or four years. So next, we'll move on to the city's quarterly investment review. We are required by city ordinance to review the city's investments. And as I mentioned in the past, the city's investment policy is fairly conservative, mostly invested in cash and cash equivalents. So we just make sure that they haven't deviated from the policy and they're still in compliance with the city ordinance along with Mass General Laws. Then moving on to the third item, we are required by city ordinance ordinance to coordinate the city's external financial statement audit. So we contract with Powers &amp; Sullivan to ensure the audit is done timely. And they usually complete their audit at the end of December. And they communicate the results of their audit annually, you know, through a meeting such as the Audit Committee meeting to go over the financial statement audit. So moving on to the next item, we do follow-up reviews. So these reviews pertain to, you know, reviewing recommendations that have been implemented on past audits. So we're going to look at the recommendations we made for the procurement audit along with the life insurance audit. So management had agreed to our recommendation, so we just verified that these recommendations have been implemented. And for those that haven't been implemented, we get an updated management response as to what they plan on doing to implement the agreed recommendations. And that will be presented in a separate report. Next, on page five, we're going to do a follow-up cybersecurity review at the school department. So that's going to look at the school department's cybersecurity protocols. I think it's pretty, it's quite important that these reviews be done over, both at the city and at the school department to ensure that there are appropriate safeguards in place to protect information, to ensure that the school department has appropriate backups. Now, if you've, councilors have heard, some, the city of Hartford School Department had recently, recently been hacked with the ransomware, which resulted in that school department delaying the opening of their school system. Fortunately, they had robust backup procedures to restore information and did not have to pay the ransom. So we just want to make sure that when the school department does get hit with ransomware, there are appropriate procedures to restore information and make sure operations continue. So moving on to our performance audits, we are scheduled to do a payroll audit, which covers both the school and city. This is probably the biggest, I guess, program or system for both city and school because payroll represents the largest expenditure. So that will take a lot of resources on our end. And along with that, we've carved out separate engagement, the overtime piece. So the city incurs a lot of overtime and we want to make sure that there are appropriate protocols to ensure the overtime is approved, accurate, and there's no deficiencies in the process. Then we're going to take a look at the city's health insurance, just to ensure that there are appropriate protocols in the city. There aren't any holes with the city's process in terms of paying out expenses that it doesn't have to. Next is Department of Public Works, the bulk trash sticker program. So this program involves bulk stickers being sold at Big Y. So this is an asset that belongs to the city. We want to make sure that there are appropriate protocols at Big Y to ensure that they're safeguarding these bulk stickers and they're properly recording and turning over revenues to the city. Next, I mentioned the overtime piece. Next is the gift card audit. So the school department has a gift card program primarily with Big Y that they issue to teachers and councilors for them to buy supplies. They're also used for incentive programs. So since the, since gift cards do have value or they can be easily converted into cash, they, we have to make sure that there are appropriate protocols to safeguard these gift cards. So there's some risk associated with this program. And I may have mentioned to the Audit Committee in the past that we did look into a previous fraud incident involving gift cards at the school department. And that, I guess, our report has been submitted to the school department and they're in the process of adjudicating the legal aspects of our investigation. So we want to make, when we did that investigation, we noted that there were some holes with the gift card process. So we are going to do an audit just to make sure that those holes have been closed up. Moving on to the last page, Department of Public Works, I've requested Powers &amp; Sullivan to take a look at their inventory management system. So they will spend some time out there shortly to review their processes to ensure that the inventory over at DPW is safeguarded, recorded, and there are proper protocols in place. And lastly, we have some time allocated for unscheduled audits. We may have special requests from management, from city council, for projects that they would like to offer us to work on. Any questions?
Thank you, auditor. Before we go into questions, I'd like to recognize Councilor Sean Curran. I believe he is on the, on the meeting. Councilor Curran, can you confirm that's you, sir?
That is me. Thanks for recognizing me. I appreciate the meeting and I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Councilor Curran. Before I turn it over to questions to my colleagues, I would like to, auditor, as we have mentioned, discussed before we got in. By the way, thank you for that very thorough and comprehensive review of the audits. The yellow box stickers, I do, is that brings in 235 or $285,000 a year for the city?
So for fiscal year 20, the annual sales of bulk trash stickers amounted to 235,000.
235, okay. Right. And so one of the things that maybe we can discuss down the road and brainstorm is how can we make the yellow stickers better accessible for all the residents of the city of Springfield? We've been getting a lot of complaints with Litter and I, and got concerns that the, the lack of easy accessibility to this, to the bulk yellow stickers might be part of the problem. But it's something that we'll go, go down the road and address accordingly. That's all the questions that I had, at least from my end. I turned it over to the, the Councilor Curran or Councilor Whitfield, if you have any follow-up question?
No, I don't. Familiar with this process, so.
All right. So President, sir, do you have any questions? You know, okay.
I'm sorry. Hello?
Yes, Councilor.
Sorry. And I gotta jump off the phone in a second, but I guess my quick question. Why do we do the school department? What is, what, why doesn't the school department contract out themselves with respect to an audit?
So the, the school department is considered a department for the city. So we're under our jurisdictions in terms of reviewing some of their programs as well as activities. So it's in the city ordinance that they're within our scope to review. Now, there's some municipalities that have their own separate internal audit for school departments. Unfortunately, Springfield is not one of those cities. You just don't have the resources.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is that all, Mr. Young? Anything else you'd like to?
I actually do have a question if you.
Councilor Whitfield.
Well, entertain. Thank you, Ms. Chair. My question is around contracts. Young, do we ever audit the contracting process? And I ask because of what happened with the police firing range. You know, that kind of just sprung up in the budget and councilors didn't have any knowledge of it or how those numbers came about. So do we ever look at the contracting process?
When we did our procurement audit, we did look at contracts. So, but unfortunately, you know, the police contract, the street noise did not, it happened after our review. But that could be a separate standalone review if you take a look at, that we'll consider to look at.
Yes, I would like that. Yes, I would like that looked at.
Okay.
Very well. Any other questions? No? Very well. Thank you, auditor. Thank you for your, for your review. And I do, I do believe that we also, would you mind stop sharing the documents?
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you, sir.
So let's see if I can stop.
Beautiful. Okay. So next on the agenda is the presentation by Powers &amp; Sullivan. If the gentleman could please state their name for the record and the floor is yours.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for having us. My name is Nelson again. I'm a partner with Powers &amp; Sullivan. Partner here with me today is Todd Jerseyk. We're both here in City Hall. We met with the mayor earlier today. So we're, we're here in the city and up on the fourth floor doing the presentation from here. So I also have a, some documents that I could share with you, too. I, I sent these around the other day. I don't know if Young shared them with you, but our reports are all available on the city website. They're all posted up on the website and available for the public to see at any time. We, we primarily do the audit of the city's financial statements. And that document is a 154-page document called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on that document. Most significant report that we issue is the city's report on federal award programs, where we audit the expenditures of federal grants every year. This past year, you had about.
Sir, Mr. Nelson, I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. I do have a document that was provided by the auditor yesterday. I wonder if we can, is that the document you're referring to?
I have a PowerPoint presentation and I have access to all the reports that we issued if you wanted to bring up any of them on the, on the.
It might be beneficial so that we all can see something and the public can see something on the screen. What I have in my hands now is the PowerPoint presentation. It's up to you what you, you think will be best so that we can be very informed.
So let me just share these. Okay. So here's our PowerPoint presentation. I don't know why the whole thing is not showing up there, but, and then we have also the city's CAFR. And this is 154 pages long and it's, I'll just take you to the table of contents so you can see what, what's contained in the report. And again, we can come back and answer any specific you might have on that document as well. And then there are two other PowerPoints, that's the the city's management letter that we issued and the report on federal award programs. So I'll go back to the PowerPoint and at any time we want, you can come back and, and ask any questions or go back and refer to one of those other documents if you'd like to. So I'm not going to talk about every screen. Basically on the PowerPoint, I'm going to highlight a few. But we like to thank you for hiring us as your independent auditors. We've been doing this for a number of years with the city and we've, we've got a good working plan that gets things delivered on time each year. We spend about 1,200 hours in total on the audit. And that's broken out about 70% on the financial audit side and about seven, and about 30 to 35% on the single audit side on the federal grants. On page four, I'm just going to flip down to page four and talk a little bit about audit objectives. And our main audit objective is the expression of opinions on your financial statements and on the federal grant audit. We audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and the standards contained in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General. Those general government auditing standards are referred to as the Yellow Book standards. So anytime the municipality is, or any other entity for that matter, is required to have a single audit, they require the auditors to conduct that audit in accordance with Yellow Book standards. They are not significantly different from generally accepted auditing standards, but there are certain things that are applicable to federal grants. And when you're doing those, you have to follow those new, those other separate audit procedures. So your, your audits are done in, in performance with, with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles and the auditing standards that are required for the audits, anytime this federal grant's involved. And then on page six, basically the 2019 audit results, and this is just generally, we issued unmodified opinions on all our reports. Those are basically unqualified reports, no issues. We had no significant instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. The city cat, issues the CAFR to the Government Financial Offices Association each year for a potential award program. And we just found out today that the city got the award for the 2019 CAFR. This is the ninth year in a row that they have achieved that award along with the budget award that's also available from the GFOA. That's been going on a little longer than the CAFR. I think that was probably 11 or 13 years. I forget that. But nine years in a row getting an award for the CAFR. This report would normally be about a 70-page report with the additional information that's provided in the CAFR. It grows to about 154 pages this past year. There's a tremendous amount of information contained in that. And I have some slides that will take you kind of through what is contained in the CAFR if you're interested in going through those. I will say that the financial statements are complete. The latest standards that were implemented related to pensions in OPEB, and OPEB is other post-employment benefits liabilities. The net pension liability as of 2030, as of 6/30/19 for the pension was 795 million and 1.352 billion for the OPEB liability. Those are big numbers. There is, the pension plan has a funding schedule and planned to be funded by 2034. There is no funding schedule associated with OPEB. There's no legal requirement to fund that. The city does have about $2.7 million set aside in assets for that. And they are funding that. I think a little over $300,000 was put in there this past year. Not enough to knock that liability down significantly, but the current focus is on funding the pension first. So I'll take you just quickly through the components of the CAFR. It has an introductory section, which is management's transmittal to the citizens, an organization chart, directory of elected and appointed officials, and the prior year CAFR award certificate if applicable. Financial section has our audit opinion. Let that go. Management's discussion and analysis, which is required, the basic financial statements and the notes. And then there is required supplementary information on your budget to actual schedules, your retirement schedules and your OPEB schedules. And then another supplementary information section on combining that schedules, which takes all the balance in the funds that are considered non-major and it breaks those out into their individual funds. And then behind that is the statistical section that has a whole slew of information about 10-year trend data on financial trends, revenue capacity, debt capacity. And I've indicated the page numbers where all that information is contained. Demographic and economic information, operational information. And the last page gives you free cash and stabilization balances at the end of each year. Some, some highlights of the year, you had a $692 million general fund budget. Revenues were less than budget just by $425,000. And if you look at that, that is really 0.0006 percentage difference. So basically, the revenues came on, came in right on budget. Expenditures were under budget by 6.7 million, including $20 million of, of school carryovers for the most part. The general fund balance at the end of the year, including stabilization, was 100.8 million. The general fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures was 14, a little over 14%. The reason I mention that is rating agencies who are rating your, your bonds is looking for that range to be anywhere from 7 to 15%. So you're at the top end of that range from rating agencies' point of view. And the portion of that $100 million fund balance that's unassigned and available for spending is $74 million. The pension funded ratio as a 118 valuation was 28.36%. In the most recent valuation, that's up to 30.2% now. And your governmental debt, the total outstanding general obligation bonds was 199.5 million. And the debt service on those bonds was 26.6 million, or 3.8% of the budget. Rating agencies also look at that statistic and they expect that to be anywhere from about 5 to 10%. 3.8% is low, but for a city your size, it's, that's what you would normally expect to see. And, and that 26.6 million of debt services is affordable for the city without, without any trouble. And then so that's kind of it on the financials. I'll, I'll be happy to go back to that document and answer any questions if you have specific questions. Our management letter, no, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that we needed to report. We had just comments on strengthening internal controls and operational efficiencies. And I can go over that when we get to that in detail as you want. The single audit was conducted on $79 million of total expenditures, 60 million at the school, 15 million at community development and other grants of a little over 4 million. We are required to audit 20% of that each year. We audited the school nutrition cluster, the school lunch program, which was $22 million. And the preschool development grants, that was 3.4 million. The way that we pick those grants are, they're, you have a, what they call a major program fund that's based on 3% of your total expenditures. So, so for you, it was a little over $2 million the last year. And then, so then we look at every grant over $2 million. And on a three-year rotating basis, we audit those up to 20% each year. So there's a pre-described formula on how we pick the grants. Some of it's up to our judgment, but on every third year, we have to audit those major programs, whether we like it or not. So we can, we can pick and choose in the years that we have options, but every third year, they all have to be covered. So some years we audit more and some years we audit less. And it's, it's, you know, it takes, it doesn't take significantly longer, for instance, to audit your Title I grant at the school, which is sometimes as high as $35 million compared to a preschool development grant of $3.5 million. They take about the same amount of time because the same audit procedures are necessary in both cases. That's the single audit. I'm just going to jump down to, there's a whole bunch of other information on these slides. You can take a look at it at your leisure if you'd like, or you can go back and answer any. I'll answer any questions you have, but I wanted to skip down to the slide number. I can only see half of this on my screen. It's slide number 20, talking about the proposed audit timeline. So we've been working remotely for the most part since the COVID-19 pandemic came out. And this is true of our, of all of our industry. All auditors, for the most part, are working from off their offices and doing their audits remotely. And it's actually working out quite well so far. We, we are going to be available to do site visits and make appointments with City Hall and come as often as we need to. But we have a team of auditors back at our office now locked in a conference room working on files that Pat Burns has supplied to us and others. But we have a team of auditors back at our office now locked in a conference room, working on files that Pat Burns has supplied to us and others. So the three weeks that we have carved out for the main part of the audit are occurring right now. And we just started this week, so our team will, will focus on remotely auditing everything that we've requested from various departments. And as we need to come back to City Hall, um, we will request an invitation and come back to do the things that we need to do on site. But the majority of the audit will be done remotely this year. And, um, like I said at the beginning, those are working out quite well. So from April to September, we do mostly, uh, planning work. We roll forward our files. We repopulate the financial statements and so forth. Um, we talk to management consistently during that period of time. The main audit field work we scheduled for September and October. So for these first three weeks, we'll, we have, uh, assistants and senior auditors who are, um, disseminating all that information that we've requested and putting it into our audit files and um, updating footnotes and those kind of things. That'll go on for the next three weeks and then, um, Todd and I will, um, take over after that for the most part and get the single audit done. And, um, put the financial statements together. We have another manager working back at the office as well. Her name's Rebecca. And she'll, she's very involved in the audit as well. And then, um, after the end of October, we'll be ready with drafts of the financials. We'll send those to management for their review and comment. And then we'll work towards getting the financial statements finalized by the first week of December. The timeline for getting the CAFER to the GFOA for the award program is December thirty-first. I'm not aware of any, any extensions that they're going to automatically offer this year, and I don't expect that we'll need one. But they do allow you a one-month extension at a time if you need it. But, um, mainly the things that have held us up in the past is the availability of, of OPEB studies or pension information. All that information is, is available right now. So I don't expect there to be any delays in getting the financial statements done. And then I'm going to just flip over to page twenty-four. And these are planning discussions that we've been having with the management ongoing. Uh, we're talking about changes in internal controls that are brought about by the COVID nineteen pandemic. You know, sign-offs change. People are not working from the office. So different, uh, internal controls were modified to, and adjusted to meet the schedules of the folks working from home. Laptops were provided to people that were used to be working off of desktops at their desks in their offices. Um, those things have changed. Um, so there's been a lot of, uh, different things and we've been staying, uh, up to date with those internal control changes. We've been talking about a lot of federal and state funding of COVID-related expenses and the associated accounting requirements. Department of Revenue is requiring, uh, quarterly reporting on the funds that are being drawn down. They're requiring separate funds to be set up for, um, FEMA money versus the, uh, CARES Act money. So there's quite a bit of, um, back office accounting that Pat Burns Group is having to do to, to stay compliant with all of these funds. In terms of both requesting the funds, um, identifying the expenses that are being put into those funds. And ultimately, how those amounts are going to be reported on the, on the city's, um, schedule of expenditures of federal awards that we're going to audit by the end of, by the end of this year. One thing with the, uh, the single audit is some of the, um, audit compliance requirements that uh, are, uh, going to be required by the new COVID, uh, grants. Those requirements are, the compliance requirements are not available yet. It won't be available until at least the end of October, and they're advising auditors not to issue those reports without having a chance to review those new compliance requirements. So we will do our normal work and get as much of the, um, CEFA schedule done as we can. But we're going to have to wait probably until mid-November before those, uh, compliance requirements are even out. I don't expect they're going to be significantly different from what we're used to working with, but there will perhaps be some new requirements. Mainly around, um, uh, monitoring of sub-recipient grants and things like that. So, but anyway, we're going to have to wait. So I, I think that the, the timing of the single audit report will be closer to the end of December or maybe even the end of January two thousand twenty-one, depending on when those actual compliance requirements become available. We've also been talking about, um, just generally remote auditing versus onsite. The city has provided us with a computer back at our office. The, uh, uh, laptop was provided to us with the MUNIS software on it, so we can dial into your system from our office remotely and access any information that we need to see. That's a huge benefit that we've been provided to do that. We, we typically have a computer available to us in the audit room that we use in City Hall. So now that computer has basically just been moved to our office. And we're able to download our own reports and look at anything that we want on your system. Um, we're also been talking about how the COVID, uh, is, uh, pandemic is affecting, uh, revenue, revenues. Permit, building permits is off, the casino revenue is off. There's a lot of other things that you may lose revenue on and, and we're waiting to see if the government is going to allow the the CARES Act funding to be used for revenue shotfalls. We may not know that information until um, probably the beginning of December. And we're hopeful that they'll be, uh, making those monies available for any revenue, revenue shotfalls. And you also have a new treasurer. So effective, I think July sixth, um, you, you hired a new treasurer. So we're spending a little bit of extra time auditing, um, treasury functions this year. We've al, already had a couple of Zoom meetings where we, we went online and looked at bank accounts and treasurer's access to online banking and so forth. Um, so we're going to spend a little bit of extra time on your cash and investment area this year because of the new treasurer. Um, so that's pretty much the summary of our report from last year. You had a very, um, I'd say that the, the, the results of the two thousand nineteen audit were very much in accordance with plan. As I mentioned, the revenue came in right on budget and the expenditures were just a little less than budget, but six million dollars on a six hundred and ninety million dollar budget. So I'd say that the, everything went according to plan. The general fund did go down a little bit, mainly related to the uh, uh, extra funding on the pension plan. But other than that, everything was in accordance with plan and the audit went very smoothly. So I'd be happy to take any questions or to.
Thank you, Mr. Nelegant. Uh, thank you for that very, uh, uh, thorough report. Um, I find this artist stuff fascinating.
We do too.
I, I am enthralled with all this, but, uh, so much information and, uh, well, thank you for that report. Uh, before I turn it over to my colleagues, I just have some quick questions if I may. Uh, Mr. Nelegant, you said that, uh, the debt service for the city is three point eight, correct?
Twenty-six point six million. A three point eight percentage.
Percentage, right. And, uh, speaking of, speaking of percentages, I'll just sort of, my, for my own informational purposes. What's the usual or the standard accepted for city decides?
Uh, anywhere from, uh, five to ten percent.
Five to ten percent, okay.
Yeah, it's mostly depending on, on, on the, um, you know, you, you sort of go through, uh, stages where you build new schools and then you, you amortize them out. When they're done amortizing, you need to build new ones. So you're, um, you're, you're kind of like right in the middle of that capital improvement cycle.
Hmm.
Um, so debt is reflective of that. You're on, sort of on the low end of that. You get a tremendous amount of school funding, you know.
Right.
Some of the schools that you've put up recently, you've got ninety to ninety-five percent funding from the school authority.
Right.
You're a little atypical from that respect, from some other communities that only get fifty percent or so.
Really? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nelegant. Uh, how about some?
I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, Council of Woodfield, is it related to this or can, can I circle back to you or you?
I mean, it was related to what you just asked about debt service.
Oh, go ahead. You can, you can jump in and then I continue. Go ahead.
Mr. Milligan's response, um, you said we received ninety-five percent reimbursement from, um, MSBA funds. Is there another funding source that you're talking about?
Um, no, not on the school side. So if, when you, when you build a new school, you get, uh, ninety to ninety-five percent, um, reimbursement from the MSBA. And then you're responsible for the difference.
Mm-hmm.
Your debt service is a little lower than you might expect because of your funding level with the MSBA. So your formula gives you a larger percentage of reimbursement typically than, than some other communities closer to Boston, for instance.
And so I would, I wanted to circle back to either Pat or Lindsay about that because usually when we're in the meetings and we're talking about the reimbursement from MSBA, we're told we get about sixty-five percent, um, reimbursement, whereas before we would get about eighty percent in the past, but now we're getting about sixty-five percent. And then, um, I also looked up how the MSBA funding is calculated and is funded, funded because of, um, different factors like low income, um, families and, and different factors. So Lindsay Ken or Pat, can you explain the difference between the ninety-five and the sixty-five percent we're hearing?
So I can definitely explain, um, I can't explain the ninety-five percent. Hopefully Pat can explain that, but I can explain what we tell, what we explain to you guys in the council meetings. And that is that our reimbursement rate from MSBA for the city of Springfield is eighty percent. Um, and that is capped at a certain amount of, um, dollars per square foot for construction. And it's about, I want to say, in the mid-three hundreds. And, um, construction right now, especially for new schools, is much higher than that. So when we say we pay closer to sixty percent, um, or we get reimbursed closer to sixty percent. That's because we have to pay a hundred percent of everything above that cap right off the bat. And then after that, we get reimbursed for the eighty percent. So, um, that's where our numbers come from. That's, we, we always want to make sure we explain it to you because even though our reimbursement rate is eighty percent, um, there's a cap on the total dollar amount per square foot that the MSBA will reimburse us. So, yeah, Tracy, does that answer your question about that?
To answer my question about that, I just don't know where the auditors would get ninety-five percent reimbursement from.
I may be referring to just one project, maybe on like, I think it was higher on that one.
Uh, but yeah, platinum was years ago, so it could have been.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about historical.
Platinum was ninety-ten, but actually the effective reimbursement rate was closer to eighty because we had some ineligible costs. So, um, you know, in a perfect world, if it was a hundred million dollar project, we would only have to come up with ten million. But in reality, usually turns, like Lindsay was saying, that we were closer to thirty percent to thirty-five percent that we're responsible for.
Okay.
Because. And if it's an average.
Mm-hmm.
If it's an average, we also have to take into account that both Dryden and Brookings were a hundred percent reimbursement. Um, that was special legislation passed by the State House after the tornado. So, um, it might also be taking those numbers into account too.
So Brookings and Dryden was a hundred percent reimbursement, but we, we counted what as the reimbursement? Cause I don't remember being told we were getting a hundred percent reimbursement on Brookings and Dryden. Is that just eligible costs?
Yes, that's a hundred percent of eligible costs for Brookings and Dryden.
And so there are some ineligible costs, which may bring the total reimbursement number down some.
There, yeah, that's always a possibility and I don't know, I, I don't know offhand the specifics of Brookings and Dryden, but we also had FEMA money in those projects as well.
I think there was some land takings too that.
Right.
Those are ineligible and that's what we were responsible for.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, um, Council of Woodfield. Uh, follow along with questions and maybe just a good question for you, Lindsay. Uh, with regards to the revenue showfalls, which the, uh, Mr. Nelegant, uh, alluded to. I know that on a monthly basis, uh, we get the revenue expenditure, expenditure report. Uh, and I'm just wondering if we could do something though, the council could be kept away on a monthly basis. Uh, as to where we are in relationship to last year with the COVID nineteen, yeah, consideration. If we can compare the amount of revenues, um, to what we are getting versus where we were last year. Um, I think it will be very beneficial to, to the council because I, correct me if I'm not mistaken, I do believe that the state did say that we are going to be level funded, at least for the next year. Is that correct?
For now, yes, they've said, they haven't passed their budget, but for now, um, we can expect, they said that we can expect level funding.
But that's not written in blood. That could change.
That could.
Hopefully not, yes. Okay. All right. Uh, does that make sense what I'm suggesting? Maybe we can get a monthly report as part of the uh, expenditures and revenue that compares where we are, particularly in the terms of the revenues. Uh, how much are we getting in relation to pre-COVID?
So we definitely go over that on our bi-weekly, um, city council meetings on Thursdays.
Oh, okay. Can you provide that to the council, uh, as part of the expenditure report, a revenue report on a monthly basis?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, Lindsay. And, um, my final question is regarding the, uh, the big huge number um, on page six of the, uh, OPEB and pension liabilities. Uh, that's a huge number. That's, you know, and I know that we are twenty-eight percent funded right now and I do believe the, Mr. Nelegant, say we have a two point seven million dollar, uh, sta, fund that is going to be contributing, which is not nearly enough, and we know that for a while. Uh, I'm just wondering, um, would you be able to, to provide some sort of a comment on how we are planning to attack this? You, in relation to COVID nineteen?
How we are planning to attack the pension liability in relation to COVID nineteen?
Yeah, because if, you know, if we, where we just keep too short to, to decrease, how are we going to continue to to meet our obligations with the pensions and the OPEB?
That's a full thought. That's a great question, and that's why, um, you know, our multi-year planning and our capital planning is so important. Because we have to make sure that we're taking all of that stuff into consideration. Um, so I definitely don't have an answer for you on that right now. I can just say that, you know, that's our job is to make sure that we're making decisions today and understand how they're going to affect us tomorrow, and that's all of that. Pat, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, in terms of the pension funding, we are on a, a schedule that's been approved by the state and, um, the city has been aggressive with their funding. And we've maintained that and we're scheduled for full funding in two thousand thirty-four. Terms of the OPEB, that's kind of a, a problem for all communities in the state and the country for that matter, that, um, this is another unfunded liability that, that, um, we're all tackling. The pension is kind of unique to Springfield and I think we've made that our priority. And, um, we have a very aggressive, um, funding schedule that kind of takes away from other services because we know the importance of getting that funded. And, um, getting that percentage up. We're, we're inching up. Certainly we'd like to be much higher, but, uh, you know, um, it took a while to get in this position. It's going to take us a while to get out of it. So, um,
And then COVID nineteen makes it even worse.
Right.
Right. I, I, I understand. I just want to make sure that we, uh, as good employers, we, we we meet our obligations to our dedicated employees that indeed they keep the running, the city running on daily basis. And so I, I, um, something that, to be honest with you, when I saw it, I almost fell off my chair. It's a huge, gargantuan number. Uh, so those are all the questions that I have. Um, I turned it over to my colleagues. If you have any questions.
Uh, yeah, I don't have a question per se, but, um, for Lindsay, we did ask for a breakdown of the COVID nineteen funds that we have available. And, um, if we could have, you know, what they're being used for. Um, we asked for that, I think, a while ago, and I don't know if anything was emailed to us. If so, I apologize. I didn't see it. Um, if you could resend it to me. And, um, for the auditors, you said that next year you will be auditing the COVID nineteen funds. Would that just be on a federal level or?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we, we, we'll audit, we'll audit expenditures from those, those funds normally as they come through. And then as those are put in the buckets, the proper buckets for the, um, the grants that they're associated with, we will audit those as they meet the thresholds, um, that are required. So if there's, if there's money spent in a particular grant that doesn't meet the two and a half million dollar threshold or something, those won't come up for audit. But any, any, any of the amounts that are over that that threshold, we will be auditing them.
Thank you. And Young, do we audit state grants at all or, um?
Uh, no, we don't audit state grants. Uh, so, um, we make, uh, I think we did come across some state grants when we did, uh, the audit of HSS. Uh, so we, you know, uh, they do occasionally come, uh, come across our attention. Um, otherwise we don't focus our order. Otherwise, we don't focus our audit on state grants.
So part of what we do is we we get reports from the state of all the monies that were made available to the city, and we classify those between state and federal programs. So we are aware of virtually everything that comes into the city you know, through the reporting mechanisms that are on the state websites. We do, we do go in and verify what you've recorded as revenue against what the state says they paid you out. And we do that, we reconcile that both on the federal and state level. And we don't look at every single one, but certainly all the big ones over our reality levels, we are looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the other councillors?
I just, thank you very much. Thank you very much for that presentation. That was a great presentation. I just, something that just jumped out at me is you audited the school lunch program. And what 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 was that, 22 million dollars? That's across the entire district for school lunch?
Yep.
And how many vendors do we have for that?
I'm sorry, how many what?
Vendors that provide that. This this is, these would be outside vendors bringing in the school lunch to the schools, am I correct?
Most of the school lunches prepared by the, at the new, at the new facility. It's it's the cost of the lunches provided to the students. And they're all, and they basically all get free lunch, so nobody's really paying for anything anymore. So that's pretty much the cost of operating the food service center.
So it's brought, it's brought into the facility, but it's it's pre, it's pre-made, though. It's not made in the schools, like, you know, in the old days. Am I correct on that?
It's not made in in the individual schools. It's made at the new food service center and distributed to the schools.
Gotcha. Okay, and I'm just curious, is that number? All right.
And that's just the federal side of that program. There's probably another 10 or 15 million dollars of state reimbursements that that also go in there and and city money, too. So the the federal portion of that was the 22 million.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press, the Council President, you have a question, sir?
No, sir. Good information.
Thank you. I do have one last question before we want to wrap up here. I did say, maybe Mr. Nelligan or Lindsay can jump on this, that the city pays a lot in overtime for the overtime. And I was just wondering if you can give us an actual figure in total? And if not, can you provide that to us broken down by departments?
So just payroll information of overtime paid by department?
Yeah, with a grand total.
Sure, for last year?
Yeah, and if we can compare that to last, up to date, and then comparison to last year.
Okay, so for FY '20 so far compared to FY '19? Okay.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you. I definitely don't have any more questions.
Are we in FY '21?
Twenty.
Yeah.
Thank you for catching that, thank you.
We're stuck in, we're stuck in COVID-19, we can't move away.
I never know what year it is.
Thank you. Well, I don't have any more questions. Auditor, no, is there anything you would like to add before we conclude?
No, that's it. I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you very much. Well, I have anything else? And if there's some more questions, I will be happy to entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Thank you, and we will be contacting you with another audit meeting once the auditor gives the word to move forward. All right, guys, thank you. Have a good day.